I want to add a quick outreach update and then we're going to do a short executive session to talk about personnel matters. So those items will be added to the agenda. We can slot, I think both committees and the outreach update into the board discussion. Why don't we do it after the the CBCC right, excellent. Do you have any public comment? None from here. Looks like we don't have any on Zoom. So moving to consent agenda of a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda, but I'd like to pull the superintendent report and the draft October 20th agenda. And then I think we should, we're supposed to add officially the superintendent evaluation committee meeting minutes from September 24th. To be consent agenda. And I have a question about the warrants because I didn't see them come through.
They're in front of me.
Okay.
Yeah, I got those today and I was, I just didn't send them off. I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. Maybe, maybe we just pass them around. Well, I guess Brett and Kristen wouldn't get to. We should probably pull them. No, leave them on.
We need to approve them.
I, oh yeah, you can sign them, don't you?
Yeah. We do have a quorum without Kristen and Rhett.
Yeah, maybe we can all turn our eyeballs on them just to.
Unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I can, I, I can email them right now.
No, good.
Perfect. Just show them on Zoom.
Yep. Okay. So then we'll leave them on the consent agenda. I'm not pulling those off. So that was my motion.
I'll second your motion. Well, sorry. Should we pull them for two minutes because we have not seen them? And so then we can at least see them. I don't want to prove something.
I'll, even though.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Oh, thank you.
I'll pass this around. So it just looks like you've got it up on your computer.
Libby, just email them.
Okay, cool.
I am going hard copy tonight.
Yes, so. That is so retro.
Very impressed.
That was my aim. Okay, then there's the second one.
I believe to vote on the.
Yes. So do the motion include these or no?
It did not.
Okay. So let's run on the first motion to approve everything except for items, the two warrants and superintendent's report and draft agenda. You wanted to pull the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what he said.
Excellent. All right. Did we have a second?
Sure.
My second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So discussion on, well, any discussion on the, well, it's a ball, a discussion on the warrants first. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
No. So superintendent's report or draft agenda, whichever you want to start with.
Yeah. So I just wanted to ask you, Libby, if, you know, given the understaffing that is still happening and the survey of the, the need for people, people power on surveillance testing, if volunteers would help at all, or if it would actually cause more work because you'd have to train with the volunteers and if the, if possibly those positions aren't allowed to be filled by volunteers because of contractual reasons, or if there's, I guess I'm just asking if, if it would be helpful to have volunteers temporarily to fill in to keep things moving.
Yeah, thanks Mia. We're going to actually talk about stopping an executive session a little bit more. Actually, the, the surveillance testing, we now have two substitute nurses coming in. One was sick this past Monday, which is why I still did it on Monday. But we do have two substitute nurses that we've hired to do the surveillance testing. And I, I think we can get that covered with those two very capable people. The, the challenge with volunteers is just what you said. It's somebody has to organize it and that somebody is me. Right now I, I don't have the capacity to organize volunteer corps. So, so it's, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it in executive session.
Okay. And then for the October 20th agenda, I just had noted that we had been doing committee updates, but they'd kind of fallen off the agenda. And I was just asked, wondering if we can get them like on a rotating basis to get those back on the agendas.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder on that. I just had, I completely spaced on that. So thanks for the reminder.
No problem.
As did I, but that is, that is a great reminder. So we'll add. Does any committee want to volunteer to be up on the 20th? Okay, let's do.
Unless there's somebody else that has got the question.
Yeah.
We do have a thing where the, for the equity.
Equity? You think we'll be ready by then with a thing?
Yeah.
Wow. Because we're sending it to policy first, aren't we? Are we? I think we are.
Okay.
We'll be ready in a little bit, but not by the time.
Yeah.
You can have it.
Any other committees? Interested in giving an update?
Well, I mean, finance committee is going to need like an hour before the next meeting. So.
We could give it.
We could give it an update.
Okay. Why don't we do finance?
Yeah, why don't we do finance committee? That'd be kind of a good pre-cursor to the budget season.
Yeah.
All right. Excellent. So we will include that on the 20th. So now I need a motion to approve. Well, any further discussion on those two items?
And are we also approving now the superintendent committee evaluation committee minutes?
That was in the first motion.
Okay.
We added it in the first motion.
Okay.
So now I need a motion to approve superintendent's report and the draft agenda.
And the two warrants.
And the two warrants. Yes, thank you.
I'm, yes, to approve the superintendent's report and the direct agenda for October 20th and the two warrants.
And a second? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just wanted to make sure that that Brett and Kristen have.
I'm watching them. I'm watching them.
Yes.
I am, I am eyeing. Yes.
You're eyeing. Yes. And you're also not opposing. So.
If they're on Zoom, do you have to roll call them for the approval?
I don't believe so. I think the roll call was just for an all Zoom meeting. Yeah. You guys do have your audio on, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then we can hear you. So learning focus and board discussion. So Jill and Joel, thank you for being the board representative on this. And Jody, who's the Central Vermont Career Center Director. And Jody, you're willing, you're welcome to take that seat. It has a microphone. It might be a little, a little easier for the folks who are watching or participating via Zoom to hear you. Yeah. So go ahead and.
Do you want me to sit with you? Sure.
Nice.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you for being.
So I am from Central Vermont Career Center and I've been blessed to work with Jill over the summer from, since my start on July 1st. And since I moved from U 32 to the career center. And we wanted a chance to update you on our governance work so that you could know a little bit of what's coming up for us, what we've been working on and where we might be going next. And Libby, if you could move it forward. So in case you don't know, the Central Vermont Career Center is currently located at the backside of Spalding High School. And we serve here, Cabot, Harwood, Spalding, Twinfield and U 32 students in our center. We have lots of great programs from automotive to culinary, emergency services, natural resources. Wonderful things that kids have been doing just this week are building trades built six tables for picnic tables for outside at Spalding and at Berry Town Elementary to give kids more space outside to eat lunches and not have to be inside. Our natural resources have been working with Bearroot's Farm. And so if you've been at the market, you've probably got purchased something that they've pissed and they gleaned tomatoes this week for the food shelf. So lots of great things that our students are doing together from all of those sending schools at CBCC. Go ahead. The committee that's been working on governance and basically we belong, we belong to Berry Unified Union School District. We always have. When we were the vocational school of Berry and Berry Tech Center and now Central Vermont Career Center. And this committee of great folks, including Jill, has been working together for at least half a year. I don't know. Is it longer?
I think your, eh, first meeting was April.
Okay. So for half a year, a little bit before I came on board, working to decide should we separate from the Berry School District and move forward in a way that allows all of our sending regions to give us support and to also vote on our budget and contribute to what happens. Right now we have a regional advisory board. And so there's a member of each sending school on that regional advisory board and the superintendents and principals often are part of that work as well. And they help approve and push the budget forward that we, that Berry ultimately, the Berry School Board ultimately decides on right now. And so we hope that in the future, all school boards will have those representatives on our board. So one appointed member from each of the sending school boards and some at large members to make up a 10 member group together who make that budget and all of the voters from all of our 18 towns who contribute. Go ahead, Libby. I'm getting ahead of myself. So. So we're working on what would be the Central Vermont Career Center School District. We've been working on the Articles of Agreement, which is very similar to what you would have done when you came together with Roxbury and what many of our sending school districts have done recently and our bylaws for the new district. Go ahead. So as I was starting to say, we would have 10 members on our board, four at large from our largest district, which means Montpelier would have one. And the other six would be appointed from the sending school district, similar to what sits on our regional advisory board now. Votes for the new governance, if to be selected would happen at town meeting across all 18 towns and so would the voting for those four at large members. The current plan for our teachers, it should we separate, should we get that support? Would be to retain the current contract that they have under the Berry Education Association until that runs out and then they would negotiate with us. Go ahead. You'll notice also that every slide has a photo from one of our programs. Those are from this year. So wanted to just be able to share what we're doing as well. So our next step, we've basically finished drafting our bylaws and articles of agreement. And once they've been perused by PA for Lynn, whom you all probably heard of and brought back to our committee on our next meeting, which is October 19th, if we approve them, it then gets submitted in this report to the Agency of Education and the State Board to make a decision of yes, can we move forward looking for this vote or no? So we may not move forward. It may get stuck there. However, should they decide to move us forward, we will then be putting together a ballot for every town across all of our sending schools to vote for us to create this new district or not, and to vote for those four at large members. So I've been reaching out to town clerks, all 18 town clerks across the districts. I've gotten a few questions and thankfully Carol Dawes in Berry City, who will be the place where they bring all the ballots on, on that town meeting night to be counted. Really knows what needs to happen and has sent me great questions and followed up with great ideas to share with those town clerks. So they're, they're starting to get an idea of what it is. First, there were a couple of them that sent back and said, this isn't us. This is Berry. Or shouldn't you be talking to Harwood or Montpelier? And so then I would respond and call and talk to them and we all are on the same page now. So I think that's a good step. If approved by all the 18 towns, then our transition board would be the appointed and elected members. And they would prepare to open our new district on July 1st of next year. Separate from this, there's been a revisioning committee also working to consider whether our current space is appropriate. If you've read any of the articles in the Times August in the last couple of months, you'll know that we had over 350 applicants for the career center. We had 231 slots to fill and we started the year with 207. Part of that is because you might have a program that has 16 seats like automotive and 60 applicants. So we're not gonna, we're not going to meet that need right now with that 16 seats. The other pieces, we just don't have enough space to make our programs bigger. In some cases, the programming that we would like to offer, like welding, we don't have the capacity to do it in the building, given the current structure of the building and the air systems and, and just height of ceilings and all sorts of stuff like that. So we're looking into whether or not we can use that space and some other buildings around the city, or could we look into a new building? State of the art career center. Try to get rid of the stigma that's still attached to technical and career education and centrally located so that it, now that if we're not with Berry, for example, and we're not in their district anymore, we may be able to move to another place without it feeling awkward. So perhaps there's a place in Berlin or Montpelier that would be a good site for a new center and that, that would be part of our next step for there. Should the governance happen? Either way, we're still looking at what do we need to do to support the students of Central Vermont. So we are working with, we've sent out an RFP for marketing firms to meet with us so that we can start getting the word out about all that we're doing and all that we could offer if we had more. And hopefully they will help us to seek the potential funding for a renovation or a new building, whichever we need. So I wanted to update you both on governance and revisioning. Did I leave anything out, Jill? Are there questions?
I was wondering what kind of outreach you are doing for boarders to give out information, you know, sites or do you have any any other places that people can go and look at and get their questions answered?
Yeah, we, right now we have, our website has a lot of the information and I've been working with the Times August to get the word out through them. But I'm looking at what other venues might I share information? And part of this tour of boards this month is to ask for your help in getting the word out and sharing with your constituents that this vote may be coming up. Certainly the ones we get an approval, if we get that approval from the state board of ed, then we're going to fire up the, the outreach a lot more. But right now it's just a potential. When it becomes more of a reality, then we're going to be reaching out a lot more and I'll be using Front Porch Forum and some other venues as well.
And do you have any idea about financial impact, positive and negative for the, the school districts that are participating?
The tuition rate, I don't believe is going to change a whole lot. With the governance structure, we're going to, for this first year, we have to have our budget approved by Berry and voted by Berry only. Regardless of what happens on town meeting day, it's a, it's a very budget. And so what I've worked to do is to try to figure out that, that bottom line, I need it to work no matter what happens, whether we're in a district or not. The, so the biggest impact is likely to be on Berry because we will then take on some of this, the, I would have superintendent duties. The human resources might be something that we take on. So, but what we've currently paid a very central office will change. We are working on a lease for the space that we currently reside in. And that right now is a three-year lease, the draft. And then beyond that, that's when we would start wondering what the changes might be. Other changes that could happen are, we're investigating some new programs for potential next year and extending. So the Grant Museum, for example, has interest in building a stone arts program back, which hasn't been in Berry for probably 20 years. So different things like that can impact our funding, but there's also a lot of grants out there. The tuition is based on a six semester average of your students. So because we have the most amount of students this year, then we have more than any of the last 10 years. The tuition is going to go up a little bit because it's based on that amount. I also know that the legislator, legislature is working on basically doing a funding formula where the, the money just falls the kids and, and we stop asking for tuition. So then it's the number of kids that we take from each school that, that's where the impact would be. So if we, if we were far out beyond our five-year plan and actually had a new building with lots more space and we could take the 350 kids, that's when you're going to see the biggest impact here. Because that money is likely going to follow those kids instead of being here in Montpelier, it would go to the center wherever that is located.
Doesn't it already go anyway? We just pay the tuition. It's a budget line item.
It, yes, but it depends. So the tuition that you get, the money you get for those kids from the state and from your taxes may not be the same as what our tuition costs. So you might, there might be a savings. Whereas if the legislature changed that, we would just get that directly from the state.
And we would be dropping, like, we wouldn't be able to count that child as a one in our per pupil compilations.
I see. We're hoping that the benefits are that we fill those positions and jobs that we're all seeking with students who graduate from our program.
Absolutely.
And so you, I know a lot of schools have one or no electrician, for example. And so getting electricians out in, into the trades around us, carpenters, the plumbers, the, all of those things. So hopefully there are other benefits to the community. Nurses.
Is there another model like this? Like, it sounds like a very unique structure in terms of calling it like a school district and then we're not sure what town it will be in. It wouldn't be like a stu, if you, if you base it in Berlin, let's say it's not, or if it stays in Berry, it wouldn't be like the city of Berry pays taxes. It would be all the sending towns pay taxes.
Right, but all the sending towns pay tuition now.
Right.
All the sending towns would, would support the budget that ultimately goes onto your lines.
So there are two examples existing currently, but they've been in, I think there's three. Okay. And, and, but there hasn't been one created for multiple years since 2004, maybe. So there, so we actually, on the committee, we had Jody's counterpart in the Springfield area Technical Center. So he was great at sort of helping us talk through the logistics. So it, this, this model does exist in Vermont and it's allowed under stout state law and there's, it sounds like three other ones in Vermont.
All technical schools.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. There just hasn't been one created in a long time. So it's not in our recent memory.
And how do students get to the school now and how would they get there in the future?
Good question. So the sending schools provide that transportation and it's part of the legal requirements under the law. And that would remain the same. So should we create a new center? Berry would now need to transport their kids there.
And just so I'm clear on how the governance structure would work, the so the budget be like a, a two question, one, would the budget be a line item on each of the sending schools towns? And then you just add up the total from those 18 towns and would the board be elected in a similar manner?
I think the budget one is a really hard, depending on what formative, what formula we end up using. But I believe to start, it would be a line item, similar, just the same as it is now.
Okay.
It wouldn't change from that unless the legislature makes that change. And then I'm not sure. I don't think I have the answer for you.
Yeah.
And then what was the other question?
How would the board get elected?
Ah, so the board would come appointed a members from each of these. So you would employ Jill's coming.
So the sending children.
I'm just taking jail. You would appoint Jill and she would be the member of our board. And the other four that are not on the sending school boards would be elected on town meeting day.
Okay.
So they're going to be elected if we move forward with this governance vote, regardless of whether they get a seat or not. Because there might not be a district to have a seat in.
So Jim, maybe to elaborate a little bit, my understanding is that it's a separate, it's a line item. So theoretically, I think it can happen even under the current structure where the Berry Unified Union School District budget might not pass, but the tech center budget would, for example. Um, and so that's, we spend a lot of time at these meetings going through the bylaws and sort of the co-mingling of votes and the, you know, up or down by town or by total number of votes. I mean, those are the things that are getting like worked out because there's different ways to approach that. I hope obviously being that it will be a yes, but.
I have a question around thinking of disparities for the future. So if, for example, transportation right now needs to be given by district, you become your independent district. You're saying that that, that will still be charged to the district that basically what's happening is you become your own district. My kid says, I want to go to the tech center in five years. And then you just, you know, you have the open application. And then I'm a single mom. I have no transportation. Does this district have to provide it?
Yes. So it, and that's the same as what happens right now. So right now every sending school, except Berry, because we're attached, sends a bus to our programs. Kids get off, they attend the programs and then they, the bus comes back and they get on the bus and they go back to, they come back here to Montpelier. They go back to all the other schools. Right now we're in 8:30 AM, 8:20 AM to 12:30 PM program. Then we have lunch offered to them at Spalding. And at one o'clock, they get back on the bus and they come to their sending school and have an academic course or two, depending on the schedule that the sending school has.
I see. Yeah. And so that, that will obviously change and they will be there all day.
I am hopeful that will change. That's not part of the governance work and it's not, it's not necessarily tied with that. I'm hopeful that'll change anyways. That we can provide all of that programming.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering all those possible scenarios, how they will be written in the plan so that's worked out. I mean, like, I just like think that becoming independent and then it could be cost prohibited for some of the schools, maybe like if you have to put some money in the budget, number one. Number two, just thinking about these parties and so it's going to make status for families that are able to maybe do transportation or not. And how, all that will be included in the plan to, for districts to be able to make that decision, family.
Yeah, I invite you to check out the CBCC website and look at the governance information because all the, the notes are there in the packets from our meetings. And so you can, you can actually read through the bylaws that we've created in the articles. But the transportation one is in there as each sending school will send transportation so that that is taken care of. So a family, if you can get, if your kid can get to their sending school, they can get to the, the career center. I have a clip.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kristen.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I wondered what, thank you, Jody and Jill. I wondered what current enrollment looks like from MRPS from both them, Montpelier and Roxbury in CCB, CCCP programs.
Uh, Montpelier and Roxbury in CCB, CCCB programs currently.
That's a good question and I can get my cellphone and pull it up, but I'm thinking it's like forty seven students.
Okay. And I also, oh, go ahead.
There's seventy something from Spalding right now, fifty exactly from U thirty two. And I think it's like forty seven, somewhere between forty three and forty seven for Montpelier.
Okay, thanks, and I'm curious what outreach looks like to our students in terms of like center reps coming to. Um, MHS to recruit students and to what extent, um, you know, staff at MHS helps to place students. You know, once they get a sense of them and their interests and how they, you know, kind of refer or recommend students to go to the center.
Good question, so I can only speak from my experience at U thirty two on this one. But what I know happened there while I was there was that the the Career Center would visit when it was appropriate and we didn't have COVID. And they had a presentation that students could opt into. So there in advisory, they were told about the opportunity to go, they could sign up. Then they could go to the auditorium and watch the presentation, meet some of the teachers, meet some students that were part of their programs. And then they would follow up with their counselors for that information about how to apply and what to do next. The applications are now online, I think the presentations over the last two years were probably virtual as well. And that we're not sure yet what that's gonna look like, we also have a person who's working on. Um, she's our internet and technology person and she's working on outreach to middle schools to try to get the information out sooner about what options there are.
Yeah, Kristen, that's pretty similar to MHS, what Jody just described for U thirty two and it good works through our flexible pathways program. So Matt McLean is is highly involved with conversations with kiddos about opportunities at the tech center as our as our guidance counselors.
Yep, okay, great. Um, Jody, do you know what the timing is looking like in terms of getting approved by AOE? So that you can start moving ahead and I'm curious how, what's the best way for us to kind of stay informed about, um, you know, any decisions that get made? And one thing is that also is coming to mind is that, you know, we'll be, we're two towns in the same district, right? So we'll have constituents from both towns voting, so I'm thinking about what, you know, we can do to get out to our constituents. To send kind of a unified message about, you know, why this shift is really beneficial. And so down the line, if you get to that point, I'll definitely be interested to hear about that. And if you want to speak to just how, you know, any, um, just how these, um, this is obviously a big move for you all. Um, and just, you know, how these changes or what changes to like to function and programming. Um, is gonna result from from this shift that could get students and families excited and and voting and voters excited.
I think the first big excitement piece is the fact that people will will really have a voice across all sending schools. Instead of feeling like they had a small contribution in the advisory board that that recommends a budget to the Barry Board. They'll actually have a voice in that budget. Um, and that's that's missing now, it really is. Um, things to watch out for, October nineteenth is our next governance meeting, I anticipate that will be, we will finalize the articles and bylaw. Hopefully we'll have a finalized lease agreement and if that's true, it'll go from there straight to the state board and the AOE. Uh, Mike, our consultant, has said it's gonna take about a month for them to review it and get back to us. So I anticipate that by the beginning of December, we should know if we're moving forward or not. Did I answer all your questions?
I think so, yeah, and by the lease, do you mean a lease agreement for the building with Barry Unified?
Correct, a lease for our current space, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So what what else, and I want to direct you to your resource for this, that's that's totally cool as well. What else will the sending schools be responsible for under this model?
The sending schools are responsible for the things that we've already mentioned, so tuition, busing. They are responsible for appointing a board member. I believe that's it.
I'm wondering about an IEP, I feel like I remember us talking about that, is the LEA that the sending school would still be responsible for meeting the students' IEP.
So the students still have their case manager manager at their school, we have a director or coordinator. Um, who coordinates with them to make sure that the plans are followed while in our building. So there's still a case manager assigned.
So bas- based on what I'm hearing, just so I'm clear, because there there are like, there are budget impacts and also. Our our number of pupils under this model, if we have those forty seven students. At in Montpelier schools, they're now not gonna be in our schools for the purpose of like equalized people.
They aren't now.
What?
They're not in your school now.
Oh, they're not there now, so that's not a change.
Right.
They're they're in the tech center.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wasn't clear on.
No.
So even if they're coming back for part of the day.
Even though they're coming back for part of the day, they're my students. Yeah. So that you're not gonna see a big change in that unless we are able to open a new facility that's larger and accept more students. Or open a new program and accept a few more students, then you'll see that whatever the number shifts. And again, it's a six semester average, so it slowly increases. It's not gonna jump up or down quickly.
So when we send students there now, they don't count as part of our equalized people count. And right now, they're, I don't know what we, what what does, what does it cost to send a student to?
That's a really good question. I will send that to you.
We can talk, yeah.
It's unfortunate because that does create a disincentive, I'm not sure if that's anecdotal or if that's actually worn out. But it is a disincentive for schools to send their kids to the technical centers because they don't get to count them.
But that that won't change, that's how it is right now.
Right.
The only thing that would change is in the future if it's a larger technical center. And and but it does sound like the way that the money would be sent changes and there would be more money sent to the to the. Tech center.
Eventually.
Yeah.
I think initially, there's not gonna be that much of a change, because we're we're still in the same constraints that we have this year.
Academic classes, so if we, if the sending schools pay a tuition. Will you be discounting that tuition to send kids back to for academic classes or how does that work?
That's a really good question because because I don't quite understand the formula yet, I'm still learning a lot. But my understanding is that we we have a tuition that's set for students that attend our school. And that doesn't change because we've sent them back at the end of the day for a class. My hope would be that we would be able to keep them for the full day. I don't believe I can change the tuition based on if there's a funding formula from the state. So my hope is that I can find a way to work within that to keep them for the full day eventually, but that's. A separate piece from governance, it's not part of those bylaws or articles.
But then what, so one question around the IEP, so if a student has an IEP or a public for a plan. Then they are sent to you, the district still has the responsibility for that special ed. For that student, even though basically the money that this student is all given to the tech center now.
The district is still the LEA for the students, yes, and that's true when you exchange students as well. Or if you send them off to, like, say you pay for Stone Path or another alternative program.
And the district still gets the IEP money, the individual education plan money is special education funding, so it's a different funding structure. It doesn't travel to the tech center, the tech center doesn't get that additional money for that special education provision. So the LEA receives the funding for that student's IEP and provides the IEP.
Very, okay.
I have a follow up question on that. Lily, how how does it work right now without going to any, if you're able to give us like a high level overview? How does it work now with a student who's on an IEP, who's going to. Um, who's going to the tech center, how how are we providing for that or if that's too big of a question or? I don't know if you can answer that.
No, she's moving.
It was, I'm sorry, did you send that to me?
Yeah.
I missed the first part, I'm sorry, I missed the Libby part.
The gen- the general question is.
Yeah, I got the, I got the general question, it works, Jody is is right on with what she said earlier. It's it's the same thing as we do with exchanges, because the money stays with the district for an IEP. We're still the LEA, which makes sense because, you know, if Jody were making ID IEP decisions, Jody and her team were making IEP decisions. And we had to pay for them, what if we disagreed about the decision? So both districts become part of the IEP team. As with the family, of course, and when kids are old enough with the kids as well. Um, and decisions are made as a team, right? So we're all at the table together to decide what what happens and what are the needs for the the IP. But Jody's team would be responsible for carrying it out, any differentiation or any modifications that needed to happen. Um, and we would be in agreement that the services are are the correct services for the kid, does that make sense?
Yeah, and and do you envision any changes in that relationship partnership? As a part of this.
No, because it's the way IDEA is written, uh, that that IEP decisions have to be made by the team that surrounds the kid. And so regardless of what school the kid is at, right, the kid is at, we we make those decisions together.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Do you see any financial implications for us?
Can you say that again, Amanda, I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
Do you see any, uh, any financial implications for us that you see us like?
For the different.
Or any traps?
For the different governance structures?
Yes.
Um, not yet, I think the the bigger question that the board will have to gr- I think the governance structure change makes sense. Quite honestly, I think the the bigger question that the board will have to grapple with with the community is a potential change or renovation in the building. Which is a, which will be a significant financial cost. So that that's the bigger question, the bigger financial burden. Um, I've been to the tech center, I can say they're doing marvelous things with kids. Um, and our kids who go there are have nothing but praise for the staff at the tech center. Um, and I think that the the facility needs an upgrade, right? So but that's that is a heavy duty money cost as well, so I think that's the larger financial question that the board will have to grapple with at a later time.
I think that's really important to note because.
If we don't make a shift in governance, then Barry has that decision to make. And it's and all of the sending schools have to pay for it. But if we do shift the governance and we're talking about a a new space or renovation, every town has a say in that. And if the board doesn't want it, then that doesn't happen.
To and where you could go, I mean.
Correct.
Seems like you could go anywhere and this government structure, at least within the eighteen town structure rather than stuck in Barry.
Yes, it gives us way more flexibility and and we can be more centrally located. It's the southernmost town and so some schools are getting there later than others because it's so much further to have to send their kids.
So during this process, I'm sure you kind of developed a list of pros and cons or discussed all the pros and cons. I'm just wondering if that document is available on your website, like a sort of a list of considered pros and cons.
There's a couple of ways the the information is presented and what I brought tonight for myself is is probably the best place to look for that. It's sort of the three main decision points we made at each meeting.
Yeah.
And that's right on on the the CT, the CVTCC dot org webpage. Because that's kind of what we went through, because we did, we we literally are going through all the articles and talking through those different pieces. And then we make a point of summarizing them in the three or four main points and posting it on that webpage, so you can look at each meeting's main decision points. Um, I mean.
So we would be going through a meeting minutes.
It's actually even more sort of narrative than that.
It's more concise, like three main points from each meeting.
Okay.
You could go through the minutes, but this is just like the talking points.
So is that one document, like, list the meeting date, the three main points, okay?
Yeah.
Um, and that's available on homepage, like, it's a click.
Yeah, if you go to CVTCC dot org, there's.
And there's a resources and there's governance, or if you scroll down, there's governance, there's two ways to reach it. And then click on that and then you can open up any of the documents that we have.
I mean, I just want to say, it's a really fantastic and interesting group of folks from all the different boards and I definitely, they're they're. It would be kind of neat to go back through the minutes because there's definitely pros and cons or different. Um, considerations depending on the size of your town and how many kids might go and what this might mean or not mean. Um, and I'm I'm really honored and excited to have been a part of it. I I definitely didn't have any preconceived notions, but. Um, it's clear that there is a huge demand for this resource for our kids and right now, we really don't. We, as Montpelier Roxbury, for example, along with the other eighteen towns, don't have that direct say. Um, and clearly, you know, over a hundred kids weren't able to participate who wanted to. And meanwhile, the demand in the in the market and in careers and we want kids to stay and thrive and succeed. Um, is clearly there, um, I really like the idea of our boards having more ownership over the decision making. Um, I think the transition flight feels a little scary, so I know we went to the date of twenty twenty two, which is coming right up. So it's definitely not an all or nothing, like, I think if in the next, as Jody pointed out, the next couple of months are really sort of where. Time will tell, so depending on how long the state board and the agency event take to consider this. Then we'll do a full court press of information and there are, there's sort of ripple effects of the longer that decision is put off. But I'm hopeful if it doesn't happen for twenty twenty two, it certainly would happen for twenty twenty three. Um, but we actually are working pretty well in earnest and and I think we're in pretty good shape right now. Um, so I just, I I definitely would like to be providing more regular updates to you folks. Um, it is a major time commitment, I spend as much time at these meetings as I do at these meetings. And um, and I'm just really excited about the possibilities for our students and. Really grateful for all the work that you guys have all done, it's a lot, but it's really exciting, the possibilities are really exciting.
Well, thank you, hugely appreciate the update and look forward to seeing the process move forward, it's been super informative and thanks for, thanks for all your hard work, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lily, thank you.
Well, you gotta get executive assistant over here. Um, great, so let's move on to the two added items, uh, one committee appointments. So Rhett, I will let you confirm this, but my understanding is that. Uh, at least until we reorganize in March, you. Just want to swap out seats where Jerry used to sit, which is the Superintendent Evaluation, Finance and Negotiations Committee. Um, negotiations is on the quiet side between now and then, so. Um, I guess is that sounds doable, does that still make sense?
Yeah, it does, I just don't know enough to make a more knowledgeable selection, I'll learn no matter where I am. And if that's where the spaces are, I'm happy to do that.
That's where we like you, Rhett, when you don't, when you don't know enough to say no, so go for it.
Right, I would like to invite you, though, to come to the Equity and Policy Committee. And we can like give you an update of what we do, I think like that would be important to kind of just know what each of the committee does. And get familiar through this process.
Yeah, I think next week it wouldn't hurt when we talk like Finance Committee and Policy Committee to kind of provide that overview as well. Yeah.
Yeah, that would, I just wanna.
Yeah, no, definitely. Yeah, and stopping the meeting, yes, works too, but we will. We will, we will put committee updates on more regularly, so.
I'd be happy to 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 pop in, I I would like to sit in on the meet, the committees that I'm gonna be on first. And get an idea of how that goes and then schedule time to, uh, like, sort of. But, you know, sit in on other committee meetings to get an idea of where everybody is. And, you know, if there is sort of a realignment, you know, I I want to be as knowledgeable as I can and. Fit all these pieces together as best as we all can.
Thank you. Once upon a time, I think, once upon a time, I think Emma suggested that we post kind of like, you know, the. Like the function of the committees and give a description.
Um, I wonder if that's something that each committee could do and whether it's posted online, you know, next to our committees, both for the purpose of the public knowing what we do. And then also, you know, as new board members come in, it's a spot where they can just, um, you know, get a good sense of what committees' functions are.
I think it would be great if we had a board member do that, considering how short staff are.
That's what I, yeah, that's that's what I'm suggesting is that if each committee could even work together to, you know, hammer out some language.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Why don't, yeah, why don't boards just do that, like a couple of lines to put? Because we have, we have other committees listed, but we do not have a description, I mean, other than the other than the names, which are somewhat descriptive, but don't fully cover it.
Yeah, we should do all of that.
Yes.
I think eventually it will be really great if we could start compiling this in documents. So we have like our own school board member welcoming packet. Where like it's actually our our welcoming packet. This is who we are. This is what we do. Here are the committees. Here are the ways that you can plug in. Here are the ways that you we make decisions, like. Eventually, so like this could be the beginning of that little packet. So when new board members come in, we give them here's how we function. Um, rather than.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, really good idea.
Part of our improvement plan for onboarding new members.
Yes.
We discussed other improvements as well.
Yes, no, definitely.
I mean, on that note, I'm wondering, Rhett, is there anything that you feel like you need right now from any of us? That we can follow up with you after this meeting?
Um, I just need everybody to be honest when I'm doing something wrong. That's all I need. I I I don't um. I don't know what to ask for. I just don't know. Um, but you know, I I want to know when, you know, what what questions are appropriate when? And to, you know, get suggestions or even a thumbs up here or there. I don't know. We'll go a long way. Consider me to be like a six year old at this point, you know?
Yeah, well, definitely feel free to ask ask questions of any of us and I believe, thanks, Jill, for reaching out and and mentoring. I know you guys have been in touch and and we've talked. But I think anyone would be welcome to, you know, spend half an hour, an hour with you, either on the phone or Zoom or meeting downtown to to talk things through.
Yeah, I was um, I was considering potentially trying to appear in some of these public facing efforts, maybe with some of the Montpelier board members. I don't know how that works, if there's any that only one person is attending. Because I think if there are three, then that changes the dynamic as I understand it. So I don't know if that's a possibility or not. And I, you know, I'm I'm definitely getting a lot of support from Kristen. Um, and we're, you know, we've had some some, we've made some effort to connect with some people in Roxbury. And I think we've had some success. I think that it'll, you know, that'll that effort will grow. But what has come out of that is just talking about the board and talking about kind of how things work. And Kristen's been a, you know, Jill has offered to be a mentor. I also consider Kristen to be a mentor as well, in a sense, just how do we represent Roxbury? What? How do we do that in a way that that works for everyone? And the the sort of different perspectives that are coming out of Roxbury?
The caveat, Rhett, is that I am not seasoned, but I'm trying. I'm trying to be accurate and correct, but um, yeah, I think we could all use some support.
Yeah, and and we have a very very new board kind of across across the spectrum. Um, so we need nominations for to appoint and uh Rhett to uh these three committees, Superintendent Evaluation, Finance, Negotiation. I think we can do it probably all as one motion. Um, do you have a motion for that appointment? Uh, no, a second? Uh, further discussion? Those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Rhett, you can appoint yourself.
I.
Thank you. I had something right before we moved on. Rhett, just so you know, I I think you got an email about this today. We're gonna have a finance committee meeting before our next board meeting.
So we have a superintendent evaluation committee.
There's no meeting yet.
I mean, yeah, well, we're talking about it, right?
Balls in my court to write up notes and stuff from our last meeting to share with the the whole board, actually.
Excellent. And and Rhett, just so you know, you'll get in advance of that meeting and everybody on the board gets this. It you'll get a quarterly report that is quite detailed about where we're spending from, where we're getting money from, various fund balances, um long term debt and our progress paying that up, that type of information. So you'll want to read that in advance of that finance committee meeting because we generally go over that together and ask questions.
Excellent. I would I also suggest getting in touch with the chairs of all three committees and they're listed on the the website, but um Mia.
I'll email you, right?
Andrew for finance.
We don't actually have a chair on the finance committee, but you can you can feel free to email me.
Well, I'm just do a two for with Andrew and talk to him about negotiations too, or. I think would be willing to talk about.
And Emma has the policy.
Oh, this is a new policy chair?
The unofficial, but very official.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
A phone call would be great if that's if that's a reasonable thing with, I'll just, you know, I guess Andrew for finance, Emma for policy, I don't know, Mia and Amanda either. Or, I mean, Kristen, but I would like to talk to each of you if I can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's have coffee.
That's that's I, that's what I did when I first joined the board, Rhett, and I found it to be really helpful.
Great. All right. I mean, I'm I'm close by, so coffee is good and lunches, whatever. I can I can I can arrange things a lot of the time. Um, for the next few weeks, I'm going to be uh kind of attached to my house in some ways, so that may make it a little tricky, but we'll see.
We can have coffee over soon. We'll figure it out.
Excellent. Um, next thing is removing Andrew from the policy committee. I don't, I think we need an action for introduce. I think Andrew can step off if he wants to, but um this removing removing the number from four to three and removing Andrew, we should have board action for that.
I move to believe Andrew of his duties on the policy.
And reduce the number.
And reduce the number of board members of the policy committee from four to three.
Go a second?
I second that.
Any discussion?
I feel relieved.
We all feel relieved. So I have another reluctant point of business is that um when we're talking about appointments, because I have slid under the radar since getting off of the school safety peace provisions committee with only one committee assignment, so.
Is there that required number?
I've had three for.
Yeah, I know.
I've said that it's.
Red has three. So I would really like to serve on the facilities committee. And I don't know if that's if there's somebody that is currently serving on three committees or doing a lot that might want to step down and I'll replace them.
Can I interject? I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I mean, we should think about like, do we need to be in multiple committees? Or can we just do a lot of work in the committees that we're in? Because there's a lot of work that needs to happen in the policy committee.
Yeah.
I would love for you to just like do more there because we all need that anyways. And instead of adding more to your plate, it's like I have this committee and I'm gonna do other things that I need to do. So I'm just being a voice of caution. Already the other committees are fine. But if you really want to serve, that's great, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I would second that. That's a busy committee and if and as chair, I I I'm okay. We can reassess maybe in a few months, but.
Okay.
Unless there's.
How often does the facilities committee?
It's only quarterly and Emma has been expressed interest. I I mean, Emma, if you want to join that committee, my general thought is it's it's a we meet on generally a quarterly basis.
Quarterly sounds.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we might. It might be a little. We've we've met. I feel like we've met like in between a quarterly meeting so far. I mean, it was just four.
Right.
Um, so I'd say we had two meetings in the past quarter, but.
It's the next meeting.
It's a good question.
Like, which was the last meeting?
Last meeting was when? August?
Yeah.
Or early September?
I think it was August before the school year started.
And the end of August, yeah.
Yeah, it was right before Andrew did the big presentation.
Andrew LaRosa.
Andrew LaRosa did that. Yes, sorry. Be more specific.
That's right. Yeah, we met with.
It was like the day before the board meeting.
So it doesn't sound like there's any rush and immediate need, but I am interested. And I think quarterly is completely manageable and I can still step up to the plates and help policy.
It is.
Great.
And I and I'm I'm wondering, my question is basically, is there somebody on the facilities committee that's feeling strapped for time?
Well, it's only a three member committee if you just, we we can just add you.
Yeah.
That might be good as a member of the facilities committee, even though it has been very low demand, because I am feeling very cold in the.
I was, I had Jill in my seat.
And that is, that has been a very huge lift and it's not ending anytime soon.
Right.
Do you want to swap?
No, she wouldn't swap and she'd be stepping down.
Well, that's what I mean.
And I would be like.
I've never just adding you and I could be less.
I think that's fine.
I do still want to be on it.
Well, that's that's just add Emma.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I just realized I was on four committees until just a minute ago, which was why I definitely felt stressed.
Yes. Do you have a motion to add Emma to the facilities committee and make it a four member committee?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Emma.
Hi.
Awesome.
Very. Are you opposed? Great. All right. Um, policy monitoring, we have two policies up for monitoring.
May I ask a question?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Um, if there are, are there clearly committees that are just more work than others? And has it ever been discovered to have a or discussed to have a rotation? If there's if there's if if there's if there's a committee that's like pretty clearly a lot of work, has it ever been discussed that there be a a a sort of predictable rotation on it?
I could add, just in my time, it's more that the committee work themselves can be cyclical. I I can't speak for all the committees. But for example, negotiations was like very labor intensive, not to play a pun, for a a window of time. It was a lot of evening lunchtime meetings. A lot of time was spent in the labor relations committee. And now it's it's not. So that I think that's true for some of them, right? And that's why I sort of thought it'd be good to have Emma on facilities, because if something does start to ramp up to have another body on it. I do think the policy committee and the equity committee, I mean, there's other committees that are newer and seem to be active, very active, ongoing. So it depends on the committee, but a lot of them are cyclical. I don't know.
Like superintendent um evaluation committee, I feel like is quite a bit of work for like one to three month period.
Yeah, that's very cyclical.
And and as far as um the rotation goes, Rhett, every March after town meeting day, we revisit committees. So that's a, I mean, obviously, as you can see in this board meeting, it can happen at any point, but that's the moment that we kind of take stock. And everybody either says, yeah, I'm good where I am, or um, or no, I think I should shift or step down from something in a pretty holistic way. So it happens once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Before moving on to policy monitoring, we have the community engagement, right?
Oh, that's right. Oh, sorry. Thanks for reminding me. Yes.
So I don't know, uh, can we have, do we, do you have it? Can you put it on the Zoom? Does everybody have it?
Uh, I don't know. Who's up to the Zoom and can do a screen share?
I can share.
What do you need screen? What do you need shared?
The community engagement document, maybe?
I'll email it to you quickly, Libby, so you have it.
In my phone. But I just had, I had a couple of questions. I can't see. Um, regarding updates, I know that Kristen, you had some updates. Um, Annie said we were supposed to the brace against racism, but it got canceled. I reached out to the farmer's market. They said anytime. You just, we just have to let them know we're coming because there's a lot of space. And so you signed up, whoever signed up, so then we just need to tell them when. Emma already did a it's scheduled, and uh, well, you can talk for yourself.
I scheduled a listening session with the Main Street Middle School Caregivers Alliance or Community Alliance. Um, and that's scheduled for October 12th from seven to eight P M. And they're doing the outreach for that. I did email all board members to invite you if you want to join. Um, Joe, I think you're the only other board member that has a student at Main Street Middle School right now. So I don't know if you have time availability that night, feel free. Um, if we end up having a quorum, we'll just be very clear to not interact very much. And sort of the model is to just receive feedback anyway.
However, however, you're gonna have a quorum, you still need to warm it.
So I thought that if it was a listening session, all the whole board could be there just to listen for something, right? Thought that was discussed at the last.
Yes.
Because it's not a meeting. We're not going to be making any decisions. We're just listening to the community. So if people want to join, um, hit me up via email and I'll send you the link.
So um, I think for the, so I have three groups. Uh, one is BIPOC group um that I'm gonna do a listening session with and they're trying to organize the date right now. I have a group with families with kids with IEP that are gonna be organizing, telling the date. And then there's a group that's gonna start to meet around literacy stuff that I'm gonna ask them also to set up a date for us to have a listening session. So those are kind of the focus groups that have been created, but if you have, I think if you if you have ideas, I mean, I send out the whole packet with the flyer so you can just let us know when. And I think that we have to kind of like move that forward in the next much weekend. And uh, Kristen, do you have any updates or there is?
Sure, yeah. Uh, Rhett and I have been a two person street team uh out here in Roxbury. We uh did an uh kind of listening session on the front porch of the Roxbury Country Store last week. Um, Rhett attended a community potluck and was able to um just hear from some folks. And then we also were at Roxbury Village School just this past Monday for three hours, um catching parents at pickup, um both at the end of the school day and from after school pickup and just invited the community at large to come in and see us then. Um, so yeah, we've been hearing a mix of different things. Um, a lot of positives and, you know, constructive uh feedback. And yeah, it's just been great to get out and see folks. I think people have been just really delighted to see us and kind of see the effort. And I think our hope is is that, you know, like we were talking about the last meeting, if it just really comes part of like what we do and um, you know, show face that folks, you know, should something come up, um, will feel, you know, a sense of who we just know who we are and um, you know, and a sense of trust. And um, yeah, so that's been really great. And then I think we have one more. We're gonna be at the Roxbury Free Library on Saturday the sixteenth. Um, so my question was too, I know this was all kind of at least this initial push was to try to gather information from folks to get to you, Libby, by the twentieth. Was that the date? And is that just fine in like an email? I don't know if you want it in any particular way.
Kristen, I did send out a form, like the idea is to put all of this in one document together.
Okay.
That I plan to put in as themes.
Okay, great.
So I did create that form that has like all the questions and like if you wanted to add anything else in there, that would be helpful to have that filled out.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Um, so first of all, I missed the the meeting last time, but first of all. Um, so first of all, I missed the the meeting last time, but first of all, I just want to say thank you so much, Amanda. This looks awesome. It's really well organized and the form, it's a great idea. It's a great way to pull all this information together. I love the look of the flyers as well. Um, in terms of some of these different listening sessions, all of them are are full already. If I see some that I want to jump in on, should I just email board members directly?
Yes.
Alright. Great.
I also have a meeting with Matt McLean next week to discuss, um, ways to get student involvement, both input on the budget cycle and also potential of recruiting one or two student board members. So I have a, that meeting is on the calendar for next week.
Awesome.
And can you ask, or can you ask me about the student groups? Because I know that last year, when I was doing the community advising for R J A, we wanted Jim to plan the whole budget process for that. We didn't spend like, so.
Yeah.
And then COVID happened, but so that that could be something like they just wanted to know the budget.
Attending a regular meeting of the various student groups.
And then I had a question about money, like the budget, like, so I wanted to make some of these, uh, flyers multilingual for some of the families. Um, and I want to be able to, and I wa- wanted to ask permission to speak with the E L L department to see if they could help me organize a, um, a meeting with the multilingual families and for us to pay for the translation if needed, so I can set up the Zoom with the multiple, uh, languages. And then have the session. So I wanted to ask if we have money for translation, which I know, and then if we had money to get some of the flyers, I can post them around town in the co-op and library and all of that. Um, so that's what I had. I can print them out, have a copy.
Do we need to vote on that if we're taking that out of bounds to provide?
Budget money?
The board has its own line in the budget.
Yeah.
So is that something we need to vote on? Do we need like, are, do we need an amount?
I think it's the amount, um.
Amanda, the budget would, the money would be spent on translation services and printing, interesting.
So I wanna.
Do you have an estimate?
The, so the translation services for, so right now, because I did that with the U S caregiver alliance. So I know that for the elementary school, uh, we have three languages that are requested to be translated. There's seven or eight families that are not requested, but that you might need it, so like, uh, I just translated these little flyers for the meeting that we had. Um, and I use this service, but the the ones that we use for translation are like forty five dollars an hour for two languages. And these are local folks. Um, but the translation of documents versus the the interpretation at a meeting is different rates.
Yeah.
So I, so first I need permission to talk to the E L L department to just to come up with like, okay, what are the languages, how much we're gonna get and to see if we can get up a date so that they can request the languages, so that I know to find the translators and to make sure that we can pay them. That's one. And so that's one thing. And the other money, it's like, you know, I don't know, forty bucks for printing. Uh, copy, color copy, so that our pictures can be seen. No, but, um.
Amanda, we can do printing, we can do color copies in our, in our office, not a problem. For that.
I can, I can send you those?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Not a problem. Just tell me how many you need. And then, uh, if you just write down the questions you have for the E L team, I can get those answered for you.
Okay, I, so I wanted to work with them to come up with a focus group.
You're, are you asking for their help in recruiting the families to?
Because, yeah, they have the channels, so.
I can ask, what do you think the best way to do that is? Not, yeah, I can ask them what the best way they think they could do that was. If you just write down some of those questions for me and send in an email, I'd be happy to to get that to them and they can, they can give us some feedback on it.
Okay, great. And then it sounds like the, the question is just probably, it's, it's one, it's translation of the flyers, it sounds like it if it's a flyer, it's not going to take them an hour to do, so we're probably talking about a hundred bucks at the most, depending on the number of.
So I use, I I use and not, I use just like this, the Fiverr, which is like this website that has independent contractors all over the world for the U S caregiver alliance, and it was like five bucks for one little paragraph for language, so it was like, it cost them like fifty bucks. But I'm not sure, it is district money, if you have any uh, if you are able to use, like, we cannot use it at the state for example. So I don't know if you have any things that you can.
Over requirements.
Yeah, because these are people from diff- from the countries that they, you know, so. Um, so it's international, but is it a U S based website? You know what I'm saying? It's a network of independent contractors from all over the world that are in this website that is, but it's paid through the U S.
There's a question, we can use school district dollars to pay this website service? Or is there some sort of restriction on?
Or if not, then the budget changes because then it's forty five.
And if you came in going to the contractor directly.
The website. Yeah. That'd be other.
As long as we're not using grant money, that's not a problem.
Okay.
So should we vote to like approve up to two hundred dollars and then we'll see how it goes? Is, do you need to vote for two hundred dollars?
I think we need to vote for two hundred dollars, do we?
And maybe can I get reimbursed or do I go through, do I do, give you the whole thing?
You give us the, the easiest way to go about doing it and the cleanest with the auditors is for us to contract directly with them, so we would, we would do that work for you. If you could just get it through us, that would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we expect a lot of money out of it, out of the, of the grab.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, Amanda, and I appreciate you taking the initiative to set that up, and I think it's something that we could potentially use in the future for other things too.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Right.
Alright, thank you. On to policy monitoring, um. I think the first up is E O three. Budget policy.
Is that policy monitoring, is that?
Well, we've got, we've got E O one and E O two on the first reading. Okay, and E O three is budget policy. Um, do I have a motion to approve the budget policy monitoring report?
I'm going to approve of the E O three budget policy monitoring report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, all's in favor?
Hi, hi.
Any opposed? Um, second uh, policy monitor report is A O four superintendent expectations. Do I have a motion to approve A O four superintendent expectations? So, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a discussion, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so maybe this is for Libby, but in, so in the section on the interpretation of employment compensation and treatment of staff. Um, the bullet point number three, your interpretation is to hire the best possible people for our district. Um, but when reading the policy, bullet point number three is quite lengthy and includes the superintendent will take meaningful steps to promote to promote diversity, equity and inclusion in the hiring process. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could give us some input, you know, I I think I read pretty thoroughly and just wasn't seeing anything on that in particular, what the district has been doing to ensure, um, you know, best practices around recruitment for diversity, equity and inclusion.
I think we're still learning on that and that's a, that's a hard piece for everybody across Vermont and in school districts especially. At the Agency of Education has put together a task force and had to hire more diverse work staff, which I was a part of last year. Um, along with Flor from U thirty two, the U thirty two, uh, board chair. Uh, so I, I took a part in that, um, and provided feedback and done some trainings on it. We're also looking into a variety of different websites, web based things that will help us, um, that are specifically for, um, BIPOC individuals to see jobs. So we're, we're posting specifically on those websites now.
Wonderful.
Um, that's new, that's very new. Um, and we've also hooked up with a service from Keene State. Um, most recently that they, they now have a service and I apologize, actually Heather Michaud is in the room, so she might give us more information than, than I do, since this isn't her wheelhouse. Um, but, uh, Heather found out through Keene State that they have a service that sends job postings out to colleges and universities across the U S to try to, to try to target more, uh, more people and and get more interest in coming to Vermont. Heather, do I have that right about Keene State?
All over, and you can give the colleges you want to send your information to, and it's sort of like, you have to provide a little bit of information.
Yeah, that's great.
That approved to post here. So basically, you can just pick every college. Some colleges have responded to say, sorry, you haven't been accepted to post here because we don't have an education degree. So they, they deny you to be the ability to post at that college.
So that's really, really great information to have, and I mean, uh, this is such an intense policy and it's, and like, it just outlines how, um, in depth and extensive your job title is and how much is under your umbrella. And seeing the four to five page monitoring report here, uh, you know, I, I hate to um, ask for more, but I just feel like because we have a great diversity, equity and inclusion policy. Um, and that's outlined here, I, I almost would like for your monitoring report to be reflective of everything that you, you know, or at least touch on that piece of it. Um, before it becomes part of public record, because I think that it would benefit everyone to know what efforts are being made.
Sure. You know, I can, I can tell you honestly, the, um, I'm just purely be honest. Probably just over, I just overlooked that piece of the policy without meaning to, just in, just to get the.
That's what I'm saying, like, you are so busy that I do not blame you for overlooking a little piece of this, and there's so much. There's so much language in the policy too. Um, there was one other question. It says that the, the hiring process basically will follow a process that allows for substantive input from parents and community members. And I've just noticed when we're, um, approving like the hiring recommendations, that typically those spots are left empty. Like, were, if there was parents on the committee or community members or students. And so it's been sort of a lingering thought in the back of my mind, like, I'm not, I've been on a couple of hiring committees with this district where there weren't any, um, students. Usually there's parents, but I'm just not sure if they, if, if they're not listed because of like privacy reasons or something, or if it's because of COVID that we haven't really been doing that piece.
Yeah, we haven't been inviting people in through COVID, um, and we had a lot of hiring to do this past hiring season, so, uh, and strapped for other reasons, so it, it may have just not happened, um, past season. Uh, students are often on teacher hiring committees, especially at the high school. So, um, they may just be left off, just the principals think not to put them on the hiring sheet. Uh, because that's a, that's a pretty common practice unless we're like moving very quickly, you know, and don't have a lot of time. Um, so, you know, so for instance, our health teacher who we went through the hiring process with like in the winter last year, there was a middle school student and a high school student on that committee, and I'm not sure if that went through. Um, with parents, it's probably COVID related for the past couple of ye- couple of years. But again, it also depends on the timing and how quickly we need to move in the hiring process.
And I'm in a school that was on the course teacher.
Right. Yeah. I mean, so, so I don't know what the next step is, if, but personally, I would like to see potentially a different interpretation of that bullet point. And then some more evidence to speak to those things is what I would be asking for. And I don't know if that means that we need to pull it and vote for at a different meeting or if other people disagree, that is totally fine.
I have similar point. Though I can't see. Um, so I had a question regarding the evidence on the, the employment compensation and treatment of staff. And the, here's, uh, in the first paragraph, that the descent in direction of understanding of the contract has been brought to the attention of the superintendent mo- multiple occasions. It is, uh, doesn't give me enough information to. And then it says there's no discrimination, kind of like two different things, and I don't know how that paragraph is related to. Yeah, I just, I don't understand it.
So can you ask a specific question?
Yeah, so like, what does it mean when it's descent in direction or, or understanding of contract has been brought to the attention of the superintendent of multiple occasions?
Yeah, so I have a, I have a, um, monthly union meeting with union leadership from our instructional assistants and our teachers. And when there's problems with contractual problems or climate or culture problems, um, then we have a very open conversation about that and try to problem solve together around what we can do differently and do better, so. And I meet with Carolyn Canary quite honestly, who's the president of the teachers' union nearly daily. Um, she's, she's always in my office talking with me and we're, working together, so that's what that means, is that we have a very open communication when there's any kind of problems. Our principals also have either bi-monthly or monthly meetings with union leadership as well in the individual schools.
Okay. Okay, and then the, the last point is I know that in the, we had this conversation before. Um, this is the evidence around, sorry, I can't, my eyes don't work. I have a doctor's appointment, so. So I can see with a mask and phone. Um, the communication and support of the board is that that last paragraph around the superintendent and the board chair have conversations when the board may be out of compliance. I just feel like we've had this conversation and we let it go from the last, uh, policy, and I would like to see a little more transparency about how conflict, um, gets dealt with before it gets into the public record. Um, and and I think that's a conversation that, you know, I brought up before about, you know, just like how do we deal with conflict and how do we deal with this disagreement before just like being put into a document like this, so that I, I feel like we haven't really had a conversation. We kind of left that conflict in there and then moved on. And now it's back in hand is in this document. Um, so, so there's a, a thing about people being in groups, and so I don't really understand what that means. Uh, regarding the proper procedures for email and participation in groups, and just like, I just want to have some clarity around that.
So as part of this policy, it says it's the superintendent's responsibility to bring, um, items that could be per per the construed as, uh, breaking board member protocols. Um, and what we've done in the past, and Jim, you can step in, is that I would bring those to Jim. Uh, and we discuss it and Jim would decide whether or not to bring that to a larger, to the larger board or to individual board me- me- members to speak to. Being the chair of the board.
I just, yeah.
Misinterpretation is that this is, this could be a moment to revisit what we an effort we started underway, I think, early summer as a board to figure out how we work through disagreements and conflict.
Yeah, we are still in coordination with, um, Carol, uh, about putting together a training on that, she's just been slow.
Where's, where's Carol from?
Uh she's uh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So she's putting together, uh she's putting together a proposal, uh but she's. So I think it's it's uh, yeah, she wants to go some thought.
Yeah, I mean, I will second sort of just the concern about, you know, when. Uh earlier when Rhett said, you know, all I'm asking is if people see that I'm doing something wrong. To please be honest with me and come to me and talk to me, and that definitely rings true to me. Um I know that I did something in an email. I wrote an email that I felt was coming from my position as a parent. And as a member of the graduation committee at the Main Street Middle School, and I wrote an email to the principal and that that action was then. Brought to my attention many weeks later in a policy monitoring report. And I never heard about it prior to that. So I think that that's just. Poor communication, it's breakdown in communication. Um I I will second the sentiment of Rhett that I just want to hear from people. I don't want to be blindsided in a public document that will be part of public record about something that I did. That was um interpreted to be. In non-in non-compliance of a policy. So I just, um and I think that the breakdown in communication, to be fair, was that Jim never spoke to me about it after Libby spoke to Jim about it. So that's where I've landed is that. You know, it's part of the chair's duty. Libby was following her communication protocols in communicating. Um her interpretation of my actions to our board chair. And then the board chair did not communicate that to me, so before, prior to me reading about it in the policy monitoring report. So I mean, I think we just need to um look inward and improve our practices. You know, as a board, and I think definitely meeting with um somebody from the Community Justice Center around. Um conflict resolution would be a great first step.
Yeah, no, and I totally own that mistake, and that was. It was a miscommunication failure on my part.
And and this does not, this sentence does not. Say the same thing that was in the other policy monitoring report, so now. We're talking about participation in groups on social media, which is not anything that I have heard of. And it may not be about me or my actions this time, but um.
I mean, I mean, that that is the point is like what I see in a in a policy monitoring report. Should reflect that like the bigger picture, right? Like these to me is like li- these little things that were conflicts that they didn't put around. Like we're not writing about conflicts with the union the same way, or we're not writing about conflicts with students, you know, like. That's not, that should not be the practice uh for the policy monitoring reports unless like there was something like really big. Feel like these are like communication issues that are not, so. I I mean. I just want to throw that out there. I know that we have a process coming from, you know, with the process of with the Justice Center about like how we can be together. So I just want to flag it and put it out there and, you know, I don't, you know, want to spare more things about it. But I wanted to be honest about the way that I felt about that and how it was inconclusive.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I feel like I need to just balance out that I also don't think the superintendent's expectations fully capture. The huge responsibility that Libby and our administration has had to take on during the current crisis, which is now in its third school year. And that the above and beyond and being sort of the voice of calm and um. And rational thought in dealing with this ongoing and changing pandemic, um even when it's lacking other places, has been very much appreciated. And I I can't imagine that everything you do is ever captured in an expectation for a position like yours. I don't know when you sleep or eat. But um I just feel really compelled to acknowledge as we continue this, and it has not gotten any easier as we. Go month by month, that that also is not probably in the job description to the level that you have taken on on a state level, and I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And and these policy monitoring reports are something that. This is not required by law. This is something that Libby is doing to keep us informed, and honestly, this type of conversation, I feel like. Is 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 part of the value of this exercise as well.
I have a couple other questions about the the monitoring report. Um. Maybe there's.
Let's do try to stay on track, so I know.
The under treatment and communication with parents, one of the interpretations you have is. To ensure the culture and climate of the district responds to the concerns brought for forward to us. Could you just say a little bit more about what you mean by that?
I think that um we're. When parents are very angry about something, often it's. You're treating, you're treating me or you're treating my child in a way that the district doesn't map, doesn't value. Um. They may not say it in those words, but often that's. That's what we hear, right? Or that's that's how we should be interpreting it. And one piece that I've certainly learned in my four years, going on four years here. Um is to truly, nobody wa- nobody in my administration or my staff. Wants kids to not feel good about themselves when they enter the building, and so when that happens. Um it's our job to apologize, right, and to try to figure out how to fix it. And I think that's what I was trying to get at. That's not an incredibly articulate way of saying it. But um in in any communication with a parent that we have, particularly from the administrative lens. We want to really be thinking beyond what the words might be on the page. What is this parent feeling, or what is their child feeling? And how can we make that um different? How can we make that better? We're not always successful, but that that certainly, school should be the most welcoming place for the children in our communities and. And our communication matters with that, right? So that's what I think I'm trying to get at there. Uh maybe not the most articulately, but.
Yeah, thank you. And then just one other question, which is, um and that makes a lot of sense. Uh so thanks for expanding on that. And then one other was, um I forget which category it went under, but one piece of evidence is that you that you noted was that you meet with faculty throughout the year. And we hear a lot about you meeting with union reps and et cetera, but what I interpreted that was like. Like the 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 faculty you would that aren't necessarily you interact with as a, you know, part of the job description, of course. Uh now I'm not being articulate. I guess my question is, what are some examples of outside of, you know, meeting with union reps? What are some examples of what that looks like when you meet with faculty throughout the year?
So we have actually one gift I was given when I took this job on was that there was already district days built into our calendar. Um like district staff meeting days. They actually used to be when I, when I took over once a month. Um and and we didn't continue that practice for many, for a variety reasons, mainly because we wanted the schoolwork to be so focused and needed more time there. But uh about four to five times a year, we still have those district days. Uh we largely focus in on equity work in the last two years around it, but it also. It was a gift for me to be able to be in front of them and they could hear me often, right? And more than just emails and and that kind of thing, and hear what I had to say, and you know, there was one, one time. Mid-year of my first year where I realized that they didn't know, like I never told my story to them, so we took a faculty meeting for me to tell my story of why I am where I am and what I believe in and. Allowed the entire faculty to ask any question they wanted, you know, so there's, there's uh times like that. There's also. You know, because of COVID and the response, we've done a ton of internal community forums where teachers ask me. Any question regarding what's happening in the COVID COVID context mainly. Um and if I don't know the answer, then I get back to them really quick with whatever answer we can find, so. There's multiple times and multiple ways in which I do that. I write the faculty a email every week, and sometimes it's a real big cheerleader email, and sometimes it's a. Hey, this week kind of stank the email, and sometimes it's, it's just a meme, you know, like so it. So there's multiple ways that I, they reach out to the faculty and and talk with them. Um so that they know that I'm not just a figurehead at the, in the central office, but that. That I'm a person who cares a whole lot about them and and works with them, you know?
Great, thanks.
Um this is also some questions about this. Do we want to table this and have Libby fill in a couple more answers?
That would be what I would ask for, but I mean.
It sounded like specifically you were just asking for a little bit more detail around the hiring for diversity, equity and inclusion, was I think, and the parent involvement in hiring?
Yeah, that one bullet point, and just to get provide, I I think maybe revisit your interpretation of it, just for the record and. Um and then provide more detail in the evidence section about that. We could just go to the meeting minutes. We could watch them. I can help, just. Um yeah, you s- I think you said it tonight, and that I just think that should be reflected in the record. But if other people are ready to move it forward as this, then we can discuss that.
I mean, I'm okay tabling it. Okay, otherwise, does anybody want to push to a vote?
And make a motion to pay what?
Yeah. Who made the original motion? Wanted to stable your motion, I think you can give the power. Okay. Excellent, so it's um we can include that on next week's agenda. Uh.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah, the next meeting's agenda is. Which is two weeks away. Uh so we have three, well, we have two second first readings and one first first reading of policy. Um read it to the, just to context, the reason that we have a, we are re-first reading. EO one and EO two is because um. The the wrong documents got included in the package last time, so we included the right ones with the proper uh red line language. Uh and then the animal dissection policy is. Is just up for renewal, so it's the same same policies we got.
Same set language, and the only thing that we discussed at the policy, main thing that we discussed at the policy committee. Was to ask for procedure, which we already asked for at the last meeting, ask for procedure to be typed up and and included on our website. So can I, could I make a motion to move all three forward?
Yes, please do.
Move them to the second reading, is that how this works?
Yes.
Does does, does anybody have a question about any of the policies?
Yeah, I was gonna do that after we got a motion to.
Oh, do, what's the order here? Mo- motion to approve then?
Discussion vote?
Yeah, okay, I second the motion.
Discussion. Any questions, discussion?
Didn't Rhett have a question about the the finance uh. Uh fiscal management, there's a line in there.
Uh did you write, or I I know you had some back and forth with Grant, so you got your question answered.
Yeah, there was a piece about. I was curious about the um the language that there would be two percent. On, let me hold this up.
Is this for the EO one, Rhett?
Maintain a minimum amount of funds in of of two percent.
Yeah, where, where does that, I guess I didn't, I didn't find out where it goes.
So what that means is that it's what we call fund balance. It's the balance that we keep in the funds, like say you had. You you calculated your annual um spending for your household. You'd set what this would be, what would be, I'm I'm just giving you an example as it pertains to your household spending and and for members of the public. You'd take two percent of your annual household spending, so say your household spends fifty thousand dollars annually. You would take two percent of that, which is one thousand dollars, and make sure that you always had that in a savings account. So that if something unexpected came up, you'd have a a thousand dollars there to spend on that. That's, that's what this two percent represents. For our budget, and we've had a bit more than that in recent years, which has been. Helpful for extraordinary situations related to COVID nineteen, like we didn't have to bat an eye. About equipping all of our students with computers when kids went into a remote setting. Other districts. Were not in the same financial situation, did not have that type of flexibility, so that's just an example of why we have those funds. It's like a, it's like a rainy day.
Yeah, okay, I just was not fully understanding, but I I I I. I think I made a suggestion that I retract, um because it sounds like. At least two percent would be, I mean, just, it's fine the way it is, you know, um but it, I just, I I was concerned about. There's a lot of mistrust, or and if someone were to interpret something as to be. Withheld from the the kids and not fully understand it's a rainy day fund, and there are going to be problems. And and it's going to be used in those cases. It just helps me explain things to to people when my little cynical mind reads something and and it's. It's not the mind I generally use, but I talk to it, I guess.
So so Rhett, for for comparison, the education fund, which is what we get our. Largest amount of revenue from at our district, the statewide education fund. Uh the legislature, um I believe it's in statute, uh has a five percent. Um they take five percent of that fund and that amount of spending and make sure that that's available as a reserve. And in the middle of COVID nineteen, or really kind of like once COVID nineteen hit and we had a lot of businesses close. Sales and use tax, a hundred percent of our sales and use tax goes into the education fund, and those revenues dipped off. And meals and rooms tax, twenty-five percent of those revenues dipped off, so the legislature took that reserve fund. And used it to make sure that schools were able to to stay open and pay for all their services. That was drained. But the economy bounced back really quickly because there was a large injection of federal funds and Vermont did very well. In terms of weathering this economically, and so that reserve fund was replenished uh last fiscal year. So just as an example, you know, the legislature keeps an even larger reserve to help schools, and it was used just in the past couple of years.
Okay, and um. Those, these types of questions can just be asked in the committee meeting. I can get clarifications in committee meetings. Once I start that, that'll be a better. Maybe a better use of our time. I I don't, I'm really cognizant of the time. Um and trying to get squared away in an efficient way, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Andrew.
I I think Rhett, it's really, really important that the questions that you have are questions that. People in the public will also have, so don't, I think that it's really important, and I think. That's something, now this bounces back to the policy committee, right? Is this my understanding?
Yeah, uh no, it just. We can, we will just schedule it for another.
Reading.
For another reading, okay.
Right, like the proc- proc- procedurally, it's important for everyone to know that this. Is going to go back to the policy committee and then going to come back to the full board for a second reading, and then back to the policy committee, and then back to the board for a third reading.
So the way that it used to work was it would only go back to the policy.
It doesn't go back to the policy.
If the board referred it back, like if the board was like, we need to do more work on this. This board member has this concern, this board member would like to see this change.
Yeah.
Board agrees, let's send this back to the policy committee, let's make these changes, let's give this a little more thought.
Okay.
But unless we refer it back if states here.
But it will still be at two more meetings.
Yep.
Yes.
In front of us to discuss and field public comment and questions, so we have lots of time with these policies.
Exactly, it just gives time, so it's out there, so we. Yeah, for instance, yeah, that's what I brought up my point about not needing. To read first read, because the reason you have three readings is so you can catch mistakes like that, like, oh, like this should have been changed, or oh, someone has a suggestion.
Yeah.
So it, you know, it was fine that we did it that way, but the idea is to keep it out there so people. You know, read it one of the three times um at least, and catch any, you know, catch any, you know, errors or comments.
I wonder if we could have a, make it a point to put in front porch form. Uh and on the friends of Facebook, like every time when I have a policy reading, just because. Just because no, it doesn't check. And I think like those would be good practice, like.
I mean, I, I think it would be great for a board member to do that. And any board member.
I, I already volunteered and I did the front porch forum post this week, but I didn't mention policies. I mentioned the, the Central Vermont Career Center instead. And then pretty much like 30 minutes after I had said that was like.
Well, and we did talk about that at the last meeting about just maybe posting the agendas. Can you link?
Yes, yeah, I put a link to the agenda. I did. I just, in my narrative to draw people in.
Yep.
Yeah. My, yes, exactly. The marketing I was doing, I sent, I focused on Central Vermont Career Center and that policy. Next time I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I can take on, do you want to just send me what you're writing and I'll just put it on the Facebook friends of them, feel you?
I can do both. Okay. I can do both. It's just as easy.
Great.
And, and Rhett, with this particular policy, this one and, and we're planning to do this with different policies that fall within the jurisdiction of different committees. So like our equity policy will go to our equity committee. These policies both went to our finance committee. We reviewed them at our last finance committee meeting. We discussed them with Grant. Then we sent them back over to the policy committee. Policy committee reviewed them and then they came to the board.
Okay, so I'm just a little behind. I'll catch up.
You're doing great.
Yeah, no, you definitely doing great.
So can we vote on, we haven't voted yet to move them to second reading. We're still in discussion, aren't we?
We have a motion and, and a second and.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
Yes. Any other discussion or questions? Otherwise we can vote.
Let's vote.
All is in favor? We will move on to a second reading. I need a motion to go into executive session person, purpose of personnel discussion.
Okay.
Do we need the second?
No, we don't need the magic words. We just need.
We just need, okay. I move that we enter into executive session for the purposes of personnel discussion. Discussing, no matter.
I second.
All is in favor? You have a volunteer to bring a Libby head in with us and I guess you too as well.
I can, I can bring, because I don't have a computer.
All, all we need is one person to bring their computer and to log into Zoom and then I can put that person in a breakout session with me.